In the absence of a quorum over the members of the Victorville City Council, the city clerk calls to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. Scheduled on tonight's closed session agenda for 5:00 is one closed session discussion item that is agendized for the Airport Authority, Redevelopment Agency, and City Council meetings. That item is conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, Government Code Section 549-54.9. It has been determined that there is not a need to conduct a closed session tonight. Therefore, it has been determined that there will not be a closed session discussion and the closed session meeting scheduled for 5:00 is hereby adjourned and the regular meeting will convene at 7:00 PM.
Good evening. It says 7:00 up here on the dais. Our clock up there on the back wall is probably about a minute or two behind, but we're going to go ahead and get started. I'll call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. We did not have any closed session, so there's nothing to announce?
Nothing to announce, nothing to report.
Okay. So at this time, we'll go ahead and move into our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Our invocation this evening will be led by Minister Karen Ingram from Burning Bush Baptist Church and Pledge of Allegiance led by Victorville Police Chief Don Yoder. Y'all please stand.
Good evening. Let us pray. We thank you, oh God, for all that you have done in the City of Victorville. Now we ask you, Lord, that you will come into the meeting tonight, bless our council members and the people that are here, that we all will have an open mind and an open heart to do for the City of Victorville and the people that are here and the people that are coming. We ask you now, the Lord, that you will bless the endeavors of our hearts, our minds, our body, and our souls. Everything we do and we say, we want to know that we do it, all because we do it because we trust in you. We thank you for all of your blessings. Now bless the people here and everything that we say and we do. We thank you now for this and all of your blessings. In Jesus' name we do pray and always give thanks. Amen.
Well, good evening. We have a special presentation tonight to congratulate Lise Almond from Desert Valley Hospital for being chosen winner of the San Bernardino County Region of the HASC Hospital Hero Program. If I could have Lise come forward so we can present her with this plaque? And I know also Garner Morris from Supervisor Mistlefeld's office would like to present something.
Good afternoon, good evening. Lise, I am here to represent Supervisor Brad Mistlefeld, who has another engagement tonight. But now that I know who I'm talking to, it makes me feel good to make this presentation. I was wondering all day, who is this person? Can it read? County of San Bernardino, Certificate of Recognition Award to Lise Almond, Supervisor Brad Mistlefeld, First District, County of San Bernardino, does hereby command and congratulate Lise for being recognized by the National Health Foundation as San Bernardino County Hospital's Hero. Signed, today's date, Brad Mistlefeld. Congratulations.
All right, and at this time, we are going to have some Verizon Grants presented by Mike Page to a number of charities. So Mike, if you'd like to come forward?
Yeah, let's just turn this around. Well, council members, mayor, thank you so much for having me here tonight. It was actually a month ago, the first week of November, that I was supposed to present these grants, and I got called out of town very hurriedly to go to some training in Massachusetts. And it's fitting how everything worked out as after I came back, found out that after 25 years, that I would be leaving Verizon due to budget cuts. Very unfortunate, but it's also fitting, though. I started my career in Victorville. When I got a chance to come back here 14 years ago, I got the choice of coming here or Redlands as to where I wanted to be based out of and what area. And I chose Victorville and the Victor Valley. This is where I was hired, this is where I was comfortable, and I came from the old Contell area, and so that's the area that I wanted to serve. So it's fitting tonight, being my last public appearance with the company, that I get to be here before the City Council and present these Verizon Grants. Now, I do want to point out, normally, we don't give this many in one evening, but last year, things just didn't work out, wasn't able to put it together, so I'm doing some grants from two years ago. Most of the organization's nonprofits were able to make it tonight, but not all, but I'm going to present them anyway. I do need to just say how proud I am after 14 years of giving out approximately $2 million to nonprofits here in the Victor Valley, most of them from here in Victorville as to where they're centered out of. So I will just start and bring each group up as I pull their mock check. And Maureen Mills, would you like to come forward from the Victor Elementary School District? And if you would just quickly tell everyone a little bit, I mean, very quickly, about the grant?
We're thrilled. This is, I think, our third grant through Verizon, and this is for the Verizon Think Infinity website. This is a tool that's going to be a valuable resource to our parents, our teachers, our students. They can get ideas on how to help their children. Teachers can talk to other teachers, parents can talk to other parents, so we're really excited about this training opportunity, and this money will go to train our teachers on how to use that so that they can also train their parents and their students how to use it. So we're excited. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Maureen.
Next, we have the Victor Valley College, and we have President O'Hearn here. If you would come forward.
Very briefly, this is a grant that will assist our math department in a number of ways, but largely to assist students who may be struggling in math and need to get on to the next level. So we're very appreciative of this money. It will go well spent. Thank you very much.
These first two, and I don't even have them in a particular order, were education. Verizon gives to health care, prevention of domestic violence, and also technology safety. Would those representing manual, unique outreach partners come up? Kay Payden, I believe, is... This grant is for $12,000, and I'll have Kay tell you a little bit about it.
Thank you. Good evening. This grant is going to work for education and employment training. It's what we offer. We are operating the High Desert Community Connection Center, where we're doing a roundhouse. We're inviting other nonprofits to join in and put their specialty to work so we don't overlap, where everyone's using what they know best to work the community so the beneficiaries receive the full benefit. And ours is, thanks to Verizon, going to work for education. Thank you so much.
Next, we have A Better Way, Victorville Domestic Violence. Margaret Diaz, she is here. I missed you, I didn't see you in the audience. Thanks for coming up. If you'd like to tell us a little bit about the grant and what it's going to do before we begin the presentation.
Thank you. Yes, the money we receive goes to education, counseling, and shelter nights, and our children's program, and we're going to miss you. This is the second time we got funded through Verizon, and we really appreciate it, Mike.
And this is for the Visiting Nurses Association, and they contacted me at the last minute, and we're not going to be able to be here tonight. This check is for $20,000, and it basically is to help with hospice. It provided technology for the nurses so that they could better serve their clients by using technology, made them more efficient, and where they were actually able or are able to spend more time with a patient instead of doing paperwork. Because they travel from home to home through the technology, the dollars that we're able to provide to help them, they felt that with this grant, they would be able to serve their client and spend more time with them. Lastly, is one of the cameramen here, the Boys and Girls Club of the Victor Valley, and Mark Sawyer is going to come up and talk about, this is the technology piece of these grants.
Yes, the grant was for Netsmart. It's an Internet safety program where we teach the kids all about Internet safety from the ability to get on the Internet, all your social websites, their Facebook, MySpace, all those kinds of things, and what to look for in terms of predators and that type of thing, and how to use the network and the Internet safely and educationally, and just to help themselves and protect themselves. So again, Mike, thank you very much for all your help. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Monica, can you make sure you get a picture?
And I just want to say what a pleasure it's been being a representative for Verizon all these years with this council. It goes back to the mayor at the time when I arrived, was Mayor Busby. Rudy and Mike, you guys were both here. You in a different position at the time, Rudy. You were still fire chief. That's how long ago it was that I came. But I want to share just a funny story. Last night I was doing the same thing, or yesterday afternoon, in San Bernardino. It's the first time I was never able to make it through the presentation. There was a cold running through our family. I was the last to get it. Next thing I knew, I was in the bathroom. I literally had to give this job over to one of the members of the audience that I've known for many years in San Bernardino to do the presentations. It was fitting tonight that I got to do it myself here in Victorville, and just to see all of you here tonight, it was just such a pleasure. Council members, mayor, thank you for giving me the last opportunity. As I said, I do this every couple of years before the council, and thank you so much. It's just been a pleasure working with all of you.
Not to speak for the nurses program, but my daughter did go through there and benefited from the grants that came, not specifically that one, but in, but you know, every community college has got their special niches. The nurses program is certainly one of them here in the height of one of their hallmarks. So those type of grants make them what they are. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Mike, and we appreciate your involvement in our community, and we hope that you don't go far, and we hope that Verizon doesn't forget about all these wonderful organizations, and even though you won't be around, that they'll continue to look at these organizations and continue to fund them through these grants. So thank you. All right, at this time, we'll move into having the city clerk present the agenda.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. It is requested that all present please silence cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices, and that personal conversations be kept to a minimum during the conduct of the meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item which appears on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards that have been placed on the agenda table in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk for the record prior to consideration of the item. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card when the item comes up for discussion by the city council. The public comment period is a time and place for the general public to address the city council on any item within their jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. It is requested that a speaker card also be submitted to the city clerk for anyone who wishes to address the city council during the public comment period. Pursuant to Government Code Section 549-54.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Individuals who fail to adhere to these guidelines may be asked to yield the floor. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Disruptive conduct includes, but is not limited to, addressing the council without being recognized, not addressing the subject before the council, repetitiously addressing the same subject, failing to relinquish the podium when requested to do so, verbal outbursts or comments from the audience. Thank you for your cooperation and adherence to these rules. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council, and there is only one revision to tonight's agenda, and that is a revision to Consent Calendar Item Number 7, the library report. There is an amended report on the dais for the council, and those are all the revisions I have, Mayor McEagren.
All right, thank you. We'll now go into public comments, and the first card I have is Gloria Garcia.
Good evening, mayor, and councilwoman Angel Valdez, and councilman. My name is Gloria Garcia. I'm a lifelong resident of Victorville. My parents' family came here over 100 years ago, so needless to say, I'm not a newcomer to the high desert. I attended the meeting November the 19th, 2011, regarding troubled youth. At that time, councilwoman Angel Valdez stated, "To prevent a child from ending up in trouble later in jail or prison, it all starts at home with the parents being involved and aware where their children are and what they are up to at all times. You cannot expect the teachers or law enforcement to babysit your children, so it all begins at home. Parents need to teach their children how to be good citizens, respectable, obedient, and mannerly." Said but true, some parents are diminutive adults, therefore unable to give guidance to the children. Now we have the youth that have achieved good things, either through sports or other activities. They come to these city council meetings to receive awards and recognition for their accomplishments, and it's so said that here they are looking up to our elected officials as professional, respectable people. And what do they witness? Four council members, always contradicting or against councilwoman Angel Valdez, and our city mayor unable to control himself, yelling at the person speaking, telling him, both him and Rudy Capiales, that he's a liar. These are very poor examples of elected officials' behavior. When these young people become of age to be elected officials, we do not want them to behave in this manner. Children have no choices to whom their parents are. However, elected officials are voted in by the taxpayers, and by the same token, next election, they can be removed. My concern is for the youth, and I have a very good reason for that. As a community, we need to work together in order to keep the parks open and have programs for the youth, where they can go after school on weekends and during the summer months. With good programs and supervision, we can keep many of our children out of trouble. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pam Siffert?
Good evening, city council members and the mayor. I was here, I am here on behalf of the Victorville Senior Center. We were here several weeks ago and appeared before you, gentlemen, and asked for some city help. We were told at that time by several of you that you understood the plight of the senior citizen, that you understood the condition of our center. Mr. Rothschild told me personally that he would have his aide send us some information regarding grants and ways that we might be able to receive some help for our center. Several of you even stated that you would come and take a look at the center. As to date, we've not heard anything from either Mr. Robertson, who we sent a letter to, we've never heard a response from. You did acknowledge the fact that you received the letter, but you've never given us a formal reply to it, and Mr. Rothschild, we've not received anything from your office. I went back to the city, I went back to our senior citizens after I'd left this meeting, and I told them that yes, there was hope, that I'd met with you, that you had come and spoken to both myself and the president of the Victorville Center, and that you seemed amenable to helping us. And they said, "Oh, no. We've dealt with them for years, and it's always been the same. There's been a lot of talk, but there's never been any action." I said, "No, you're wrong. You're wrong." Unfortunately, it appears that they were right, and I am wrong. I hope that someone here will please follow through on what they've said. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Barbara Powers?
Good evening, mayor and council members. My family and I have been on the high desert for 45 years, so we kind of, we've been to Hesperia and Victorville and everywhere, Apple Valley. But we've been 12 years in Victorville. In the last six months, I've been working on Seventh Street in Old Town, and I was shocked to see the safety of the crosswalks is just not there. There's, it's a beautiful setting, I mean, you have the nice sign and there's a lot of nice trees, but people are going to get killed on that road. They're coming down, they're 16, 70 miles an hour to D Street, and they pay no attention to people starting to cross across the street. So it's been very dangerous, and at the... to people starting to cross across the street. So, it's been very dangerous. And at the A and Seventh, the barber shop, there's people continuously going over there. And one of the girls at the Cheek Boutique said that they're, the people getting the bus come to go to lunch at the St. John of Arc. They come at 11 o'clock every day and it's a very dangerous situation. So, somebody needs to know about that. And I did submit an email to the planning commission regarding parallel parking on that street. I know it's been all different ways and they've tried to open it up and that's made a speedway coming through town. And to, if there could be a parallel parking and maybe like Big Bear where they have the one-way, each-way street. That's an idea. But it's got to be slowed down somehow or by someone. The alternate for that situation, the alternate could be Sixth Street going left or Eighth Street or even on up to Hisperia Road. But to slow that traffic down somehow. The 66 Museum, oh, the people that do support that idea, I went around and kind of asked the people, Santa Fe, the PDQs, Cheek Boutique, Set Free Thrift, Boxing, Life Photography, the Prosthesis Facility, and Don Feresi for Realty. The 66 Museum is just around the corner and for them to come through, if they want to see something, they just drive through. I mean, they need some business in there and there's plenty of rentals. And they just need more facility, more people patrolling that too. It's, and to clean up graffiti and that kind of thing. It's embarrassing. So, I'm just wondering if this council would take that in consideration and bring it up and think of something to do. Like I say, I do have the one idea in front of the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Leon?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Carrie Leon. I'm the broker-owner of Oggio Real Estate in Apple Valley. I have been a high desert resident since 1967 and I have been in the real estate-related, real estate and real estate-related industries for 33 years. I have sold, transferred, listed, or overseen over 17,000 transactions in the high desert. I would like to thank you for allowing me the opportunity this evening to bring to your attention some concerns in regards to the policy in which liens are handled. I have given you a copy showing you, on the first page, we have a client who bought a property in Victorville and closed escrow July 26th of 2011. Just recently, he has received his tax bill. On the second page here, I'm showing you a lien that was done in June 15th of 2010, not recorded until August 10th of 2011, which is well over a year. This lien was for $291. There was another lien on this property dated June 21st of 2011, but not recorded till August 4th. Our client closed escrow in July. When liens are not recorded, they're not, they're not of public record and they're not put on the prelims for the title company's Steven request demands. So, what has happened to this buyer, if you look at the second to the last page, there's a tax bill. And on the tax bill, there's delinquent water fees for $327.57 and delinquent trash fees for $754.44. What this means if our client has an impound account, besides this not being his responsibility and not his bill and when he goes in, he's being told, "Yes, you have to pay it. Go back to your title company," if a client has an impound account, this causes a shortage. What that means to our clients is the bank will require the past due amount of $1,081.98 and a future amount of $1,081.98, which then means the impound account will be raised $2,163, which ultimately means $181 added to the monthly payment. Most people cannot afford that. So, that would cause an extreme hardship. So, I would like to see if there's a way we can go over the policies in which the liens are done. I know if I call to try to request a lien as a realtor, they require a $5 fee. Not really a problem, but the realtor would pay that. But then the lien would, the demand would be given to us and the title company, an escrow company would request that all over again. So, it's double work for the city for us to have to do that. We do not really request liens unless there's a demand, unless there's a lien on a property. So, this is a huge concern since recently over 1,000 liens were just put on properties from prior owners to new owners. So, I would just hope that I could get some attention and help in this matter.
Darren Sines? Oh, okay. Cecil Walsh? If I pronounce that wrong.
My name's Cecil Walsh. I'm a broker. I'm the past president of the Victor Valley Association of Realtors. Wanted to thank city council for taking a minute to listen. It's a similar line as to what Carrie was talking about. But there's a few things that are really disturbing about this. The bill that's being put on a new owner, like we've got a lot of vacant houses across the Victor Valley. We have new families moving into those houses and cleaning them up, spending money on fixing the house and everything. And all of a sudden, they get their tax bill and there's an extra $1,000 on there that's not their bill. They didn't use the water. They didn't not pay the trash bill. And to be told that it's tough kittens, you just have to pay it is just fundamentally wrong. And it creates an enormous amount of problems, not only for goodwill to the city. Someone just moved to the city and now they have a really negative experience that's really needlessly handled. I think, I think if there's an issue with shortage of staff, it maybe you could, maybe you know, outsource it or something to get these things recorded. Because we all do our due diligence. We try to call the city. We try to make sure that we have every possible lien that's cleared so they, so the client gets clear title. But if it's not recorded, the title company cannot produce a report that indicates and they can't settle it. And you know, you take a new family that just moves in here and they have, it's really, really wrong and it's going to end up costing legal fees to the city to defend a lawsuit. It's going to happen. And I think that that's not what any of us want to have happen. And the other thing to consider, and we have a lot of investors that are paying cash for properties in the city now, and I'm sure you all know that. They buy them, they fix them up, they put renters in there, or they flip them and sell them to a new owner that doesn't want to fix up the property. And what's happening there is if a guy pays cash for the property, you guys know you're not going to get your money for potentially five years because the state won't lien them until the tax bill's five years delinquent. So, that's not, you're not getting your money any faster. I mean, the money is, putting it on the tax bill, I think, is really misplaced and it's not the appropriate way to collect a bill for a utility. So, thank you.
Nicole Smith?
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Thank you for allowing me to express my comments before you today. My name is Nicole Smith and I am the program coordinator for the African-American Health Institute of San Bernardino County. As you are aware, the state of California is currently redesigning the mental health services system to be more responsive to our diverse population. For the past two years, the Department of Mental Health has been conducting a statewide, unique, community-based project to better understand the complex issues of major ethnic population needs for prevention and early intervention. The California Reducing Despair Use Project was funded by the Mental Health Services Act and each ethnic group was commissioned to create a population-based report. I am here today to show you the draft copy of the African-American Population Report and this is available online on our website at www.aahi-sbc.org. And a final copy will be available January 1. Programs, interventions, strategies are all documented in the draft as well as easy reference resources. So, I strongly recommend that you guys take this population report in consideration when you make critical decisions, when you fund mental health services for the communities that you serve. And I have my business card just in case you want to contact me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Randy Masaro?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. This is Dean, City Council. I'm Randy Masaro and I'm no stranger to this podium. You've all gotten to know me in the past few weeks, especially Marcy and Carol Lee. It's getting to be where I'm coming in and they run the other way very fast if they see me coming. But no, no fun intended. But really, I just wanted to, I wanted to express my appreciation is why I'm here. A few weeks ago, I asked you, city council members, Mayor McEckern, Angela Valles, and the rest of you, to please attend a rally that was held here on November 17th in a informational, educational roundtable meeting with the politicians. For the members in the audience that didn't show up and a lot of people that didn't know or didn't even come, it was a long time coming that we had that meeting. The TV series Meet America, we filmed for that series. It's going to be on the air sometime soon once I get the discs up there to them. But I wanted to let you know, you as city council members, you guys have been on the chopping block quite a bit from various organizations that you're not doing your job, you're not listening or what have you. I want to say tonight that you took the time to listen to many organizations, senior citizens, Veterans of Foreign Warriors, the Korean Businessmen's Association was there on November 17th, Native Americans for Social Justice, NAR, which is Native American Animal Rights Movement, First Nations, Four Directions Indians, amongst many other groups that were there to express what was going on with our tax dollars being spent killing our wildlife. Not only here in San Bernardino County as they're spending $70,000 to kill mountain lions, bears, and coyotes, but also it was great to have all of you. $75 million to kill wild horses and bulls. And the Obama administration dealt us a deadly blow as they voted to bring horse slaughter back to the United States. It was all over Yahoo News this past week. So, that's another four and a half million dollars being spent killing horses besides the $75 million. We were pointing out that all of that money could be going to all these various groups, all these charitable organizations, or they're cutting Medicare, cutting VA benefits, cutting social security, cutting welfare, cutting Veterans of Foreign Warriors, senior citizen benefits, when millions of dollars could be given to these groups. And look what they're doing. They're making more in our wildlife. And that's why we pointed that out to you that day. It wasn't a witch hunt. It wasn't going after the Republicans, the Democrats, or the Tea Party. It was just an informational meeting and you guys took your time out of your busy schedule to show up. And ladies and gentlemen, as many, as many of us may have grievances with a lot of issues going on here, I want to give you a round of applause and say thank you. I want to say thank you and I applaud you on behalf of many Native American Indian groups and animal rights groups. We'll also extend invitation for you to come out to Victor Valley's very own Wolf Mountain Sanctuary to interact with the wolves, as many of the movie stars do attend the Wolf Mountain Sanctuary like the cast and crew from Twilight and many other groups go out there. We'd love you guys to come on out there. I do want to commend you. I wish we had time to go ahead and show this. Maybe it's time in the future to show the audience what took part, what took place in that meeting the other day. But I hope we got something out of it. I hope we educated you because those of you that are continuing to move on and run for Congress, I hope we've enlightened you to what's really going on with in Washington with our taxpayer dollars. And again, for those of you that want my card and feel free to keep in touch, members of the audience, I have my business card. Feel free to keep in touch. And again, I can't thank you enough for attending that ever so important meeting. I hope we've enlightened you. I hope you did get something out of it. I hope. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. David Mueller?
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name's Dave Mueller. I'm with highdeserpolitics.org. I came this evening to see if you, any of you had read the article in The Sentinel, which was dated December 2nd, 2011. It's a very good article that everybody should read. It's very in-depth. It's eight pages. But I wanted to read a section that caught my attention. And this has to do in regards to the crowing I've heard out of this city about my Brown Act violations being dismissed as lacking merit. "The U.S. Attorney's Office alarmed at the wholesale squandering of financial resources in Victorville's municipal operations as well as blunders with regard to federal law governing securities and its foreign investment programs and further dismayed by the inability of the local district attorney's office and grand jury to take action. Left into the breach and has now assigned the FBI agents to examine Victorville with a scrupulously mean eye." I like that last phrase. But my point being that just because the DA dismissed those charges and those complaints doesn't mean a thing. "I said in my story for htpolitics.org that I expected Ramos's PIU unit to dismiss my numerous complaints when I filed them. I knew he would do that. I expected that because Ramos cannot seem to find any corruption and successfully prosecute it anywhere in this county. The Sentinel story explains why." I recommend that you give it a read. "On a different subject, I filed a public records request to get information about the Spice of Life Party." I'm glad that Mike Page was here tonight handing money out to different organizations. I'm sure every one of them is a worthwhile nonprofit. But I have to question after I went through those public records requests, the email traffic between the three agencies, Victorville, Bears, and High Desert Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, why certain amounts of money were diverted. For instance, BRTech gave $27,000 and only 5,000 of that ended up going to Bears. And I have to ask you, over 10 years that this program's been going, the city has spent $107,787.08, but only took in $104,448.78. So, you've lost over $3,000 and Parks and Rec is threatened with being closed. And why would you keep doing it if you're not making money? Those checks that were handed out tonight, even one of them would have helped keep Doris Davies Park open probably for another year. But yet, all they got from Verizon is 5,000. I believe it was 3,000 actually last year. And I just don't understand why you would continue doing Spice of Life if you're not making money doing it. That doesn't make any sense. Take that $107,000 and put it into your Parks and Rec and you could probably keep Doris Davies open for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb Perry?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council people. My name is Deb Perry. I'm with Stewart Title and Escrow and we have an office in Victorville over on Hisperia Road. We do title and escrow there. And I'm speaking to the lien situation. I want you to consider filing those liens timely. We have to deal with the customers who come in and have liens on their tax bills after we have closed escrow. And what that, what happens is, we want to collect money for you. That's what we do and we like doing it. But if the banks don't know there's a lien, they won't pay it. And we have to know ahead of time. 13 months, a lien that's filed 13 months late, that's too late for us to pay. And it's not for the, for the consumer to be paying that. It's the bank's responsibility as a rule, the REO banks. We do a lot of fanies in our office, so we see a lot of bank REOs. And if those liens are there, we'll pay them. So, I want you to consider being more timely in paying those liens. Thank you.
Thank you. Although we can't generally respond to public comment, I would just ask that staff would put together some sort of report with respect to this particular complaint.
I'd be happy to. I'd actually be happy to meet with the realtors and title companies as well. This is the first I've heard of this issue specifically. I know that we did have some problems placing liens in the past and we were behind. We're playing catch-up and we're trying to get to the point that this issue doesn't come up. But if the first time I hear about it is as a council meeting, it's pretty tough for me to respond. for me to respond. Um, also regarding the senior center, just so the, the folks that are here know, um, I do intend on coming to visit the senior center. I was told immediately following the meeting last time that another agency was considering awarding a grant to the senior center, was gonna take a look at it. And I dropped the ball in not coming out there myself, thinking someone else was handling it. I will be out there, uh, next week if you'll have me there. Um, and then, lastly, regarding Doris Davies Park, I don't understand why public comments, everyone, not everyone, certain individuals like to talk about Doris Davies Park being closed. Doris, Doris Davies Park has never been scheduled to be closed, never been talked about being closed. Uh, we have considered, uh, shutting down some of the recreational facilities there. Uh, at this point, the pool is closed for weather, uh, and, uh, I would expect that it would reopen in the spring like it always will, based on comments for the last six months about this issue.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question for the city manager. Does the city of Victorville contribute anything to the Spice of Life event?
Uh, in the past, uh, we have, uh, contributed, back when we were contributing to a variety of chamber and community events. At this point, we do not. Uh, we do contribute staff time, uh, to the event. Uh, we, uh, assist the day of the event, uh, quite, quite a bit. Uh, I have been in recent contact with, uh, two of our local chambers of commerce who are interested in taking a larger role, and I've, I've, uh, sent a letter to one indicating that, uh, based on loss of some key management staff and community services, I did not believe that, uh, we would be in a position to have as large a role as we have in the past. So, uh, inviting them to submit some kind of a proposal to this council to take over that event. Uh, so, met with another chamber today who is also interested in, in taking a larger role as well. So, um, that's a, sort of a, uh, changing environment, uh, one that, uh, you know, I just can't, can't commit to staff time to now, uh, and don't know when I'll be able to, so.
But the city does not take in 104,000 and spend 107,000 on this event?
No, that, I think, was a 10-year number for the entire event. Uh, much like a lot of services that the city provides, the parks do not take in money, the parks do not make money. If we were to, um, only, uh, engage in activities that made money, we'd be a for-profit entity. In fact, um, Mr. Cox used to like to say that, uh, in, back when, uh, we had, uh, previous city councils, before I was with the city, I was probably in high school at the time, actually, that, uh, when this issue would come up, if we were to consider only funding departments or, or operations that made money, then the city council would be the first one that would have to go, because the city council doesn't make money for the city. Um, so, the fact whether or not, uh, a program makes money for the city is not necessarily a determining factor, especially when considering parks and recreation.
Um, Mr. Mayor, and just on the senior citizens, I feel like I've dropped the ball too, a bit, on that, um, should have followed up with, uh, the city manager, so whatever we're doing, and certainly the meeting with them, uh, cranked me into that, uh, I made that personal promise, and I mean to that, and I'll stick to it, so. Um, matter of fact, I'll give you my card with my cell phone number, and you can get on me. But, uh, I'll be, I'll definitely be a part of that too. I must, I dropped the ball, I should have.
Yeah, we'll right over to the next one.
And talk to you about it.
I, I just have one question. So, we can't make money off of Spice of Life and then transfer it over to Parks and Recs? That's not allowed?
Um, I don't know that it's not allowed. Um, historically, Spice of Life hasn't made money. Uh, I think there's a fund balance of roughly $13,000, and I think this year, um, you know, you spend some of that fund balance as you gear up for the program, and then, as the money comes in, I believe they got roughly back to break even, within a few hundred dollars or maybe a few thousand dollars. Um, but as far as could Spice of Life, uh, become a moneymaker and return money to the parks, that is something that could happen, uh, at some point. That was not the original intent of the event, was to, for it to be a moneymaker. But, uh, to the extent that it is, that money would be discretionary dollars of this council.
All right, we'll now move into the rest of our agenda. The first, uh, library board of trustees, the consent calendar, there is a revision.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis. Motion carries unanimously.
There are no items at time of posting under the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, so under Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, uh, Agenda Item Number Eight is Request to Accept the Modification to the Existing Military Construction Cooperative Agreement for an Increased Amount of $11,376.60.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number Nine is Request to Approve an Additional Appropriation to Vance Corporation Contract in the Amount of $11,376.60 for the SCLA Taxiway U Reconstruction Project.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number Ten is Request to Approve the Increase in the Existing PB Design Engineering Contract in the Amount of $19,490 and Appropriate an Additional $19,490.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number Eleven is Request to Approve the Increase in the Existing PB Engineering Services Contract in the Amount of $5,434 and Appropriate an Additional $5,434.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number Twelve is Request to Approve the Execution of Amendment One, Extending the Term of the Lease for the amended and restated ground lease agreement, binding between SCLA A and the Boeing Company.
Additional two years on that lease, nice, good job, Keith.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number Thirteen is Request to Approve the Execution of Amendment Seven, Extending the Term of the License for the License Agreement for Access to Portions of Building 717, binding between SCLA A and the Boeing Company.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number Fourteen is Request to, One, Approve an Inter-local Contract for Cooperative Purchasing with the Houston Galveston Area Council. Two, Approve an Award of a Contract to HGAC for the Piggyback Purchase of a Timeco Model 600 Regenerative Air Sweeper in a Total Amount of $218,791.77. And Three, Approve an Additional Appropriation of $118,791.77 from Airport Operational Revenues for Said Purchase.
I have a question for, uh, Mr. Masaro. How in the world were we able to keep that runway clean with the old sweeper?
Uh, it, it certainly has been a, a tough challenge. Uh, we've, uh, worked this, uh, uh, the replacement sweeper to death. We've actually spent a lot of money, and it got to a point where we're spending a lot of money just maintaining it, to the point where it starts becoming, uh, more economically feasible to, to bring a new unit on. Uh, but we, uh, at times have, uh, three sweepers available to do different types of jobs, to keep the runways and taxiways and even the ramp system clean, depending upon the type of debris that's in the, in the runways. This sweeper that we're replacing is the sweeper, um, uh, that actually picks up the most fine of materials, the, the really fine sands, um, and, and to keep the runways and taxiways free from those. We have other sweepers that deal with different types of materials, bigger materials, uh, bigger in nature, bigger in size. Uh, but this is the one that we run most importantly, most regularly, in fact, um, but is a part of our daily operation at 6:00 AM. One of the first courses of business for the work crew out there is to do, uh, a, a daily sweeping, just to make sure that that, the runway system is clean.
Um, I have a question. The additional 118,000, it says is coming from the airport operations, but I don't see what the, uh, balance is in the airport operations, unless I'm missing it.
Uh, I don't think we have it identified in the staff report. Um, we did look at revenues versus expenditures, um, just before preparing this staff report, and, uh, we have actually been tracking on budget. We were finding that we're revenue over expenditure thus far this year to the order of about a million dollars. Um, and plus, we've also had, um, operating revenues carried over from previous years, uh, that are actually sitting in, in operating account for these kinds of expenditures.
So we have over a million dollars in that account, so we're, we're good with 118?
That's correct.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
There were no items at the time of posting under the Redevelopment Agency or the Joint Powers Financing Authority, so moving on to the Victorville Water District, we do have the consent calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis. Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to the city council, public hearing, Agenda Item Number Sixteen. This is a hearing called to hear arguments for and against a request for another continuance to March 6, 2012, for Code Amendment PLN 10-00027. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. I do have a card, Brian Saunders. Brian? Oh, I'm sorry, it said sixteen. My, my apologies. All right, anyone else wishing to address the council on Agenda Item Number Sixteen? Being no one, we'll go ahead and continue that item to March 6, 2012, at which point it'll be PLN 11 something. All right. Uh, moving on to Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Hearing Called to Hear Arguments for and Against Establishing a Renewable Energy Resources Enforcement Program Pursuant to California Senate Bill 21X, as Set forth in Resolution Number 11-051. Uh, this is a public hearing, we'll open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number Seventeen. I do have one card, Mr. Mueller?
Yes, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, Council. Again, my name's Dave Mueller, I'm with High Desert Politics.org. Uh, I am, uh, coming to object, since this is a public hearing, um, and I just want to be on, on record as objecting to what you're doing this evening. Um, in that Sentinel story that I referenced earlier, from December 2nd, 2011, um, VEMUS, which is the Victorville Municipal Utility Services, as of March 2011, is $78 million in the hole. Uh, you can verify that through Capariti and Larson's audit, or you can go to Meyer Hoffman McCann's, if you'd like to prefer theirs, but, uh, they pretty much verify that that VEMUS, your municipal utility services, is a smoking hole. Um, Doug Robertson was assigned to oversee the Foxborough Co-Generation Plant that helped contribute to those losses. He, I think he was the third or fourth manager of it. Um, and then, of course, the state didn't help you out any, because, and, once you got committed, uh, to how you were gonna run it, they switched out on you that you had to go green. So that was part of the problem. And that's not your fault, but that's the state always outmaneuvering you. And, uh, they're, they're gonna do it again to you, by the way. Um, you know, the generators beat, that were not, uh, they were biodiesel, and then they had to switch to a different type of fuel, uh, didn't comply with green energy standards. Uh, that wasn't anticipated, but the city lost another $126 million on that plant as a result of that. It's a total failure. The, the Victorville Municipal Utility Services is a total financial failure. The only success you've had was, uh, Buck John's High Desert Power Project, but he didn't give Victorville the, the financial benefits of that power. That went to the state water project. You got this, except maybe tax revenue generated from the plant. But as far as power generation for the businesses in this city, that's how much they got. Why should the people of Victorville believe that the same A-team that you previously had assigned, Mr. Robertson and your legal counsel, Mr. D. Wortnowski, is gonna give you, deliver different results on this renewable energy? Because the state, Air Resources Board, in your own staff letter, they're waiting with a mallet over your head, and when you miss those, those compliance dates, they're gonna hammer you. Have, are you telling the public what the fines are? Are you telling the public how you're gonna meet these requirements in this staff letter? Are you telling the public what REC's are? Most of them probably don't even know what we're talking about. Those are renewable energy credits. Victorville has them. You have REC's, don't you? Are they bundled or unbundled? Public doesn't know what's going on here, and you're setting them up to pick the tab up when the state comes in and hammers you. And they will hammer you, because you probably won't comply. You're not even telling the public tonight how you're going to do this, how you're gonna meet these requirements. The city of Victorville has, um, I think you need to explain to the people of Victorville what REC's you have and who provided them. And is HDPP, Buck John's, in any way involved in any, any of those REC's or providing either power or credits to, to the future goals? So in other words, is he gonna be involved in this at all, as far as, uh, financially? I think you need to answer these questions for the public. They're, they're entitled to know these things. I know that you're, all you're doing is telling people state policy tonight, the state law, SB 21X, but I don't think that the general public understands what you are doing. And I'm telling you, VEMUS is a financial failure. You need to, you need to pull out of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the city council on our Agenda Item Number Seventeen? Being no one, I'll close the public hearing or turn it to the council?
Yeah, I'd like to take a shot at this event, too. Um, first of all, I, I'm not prepared to support, um, the, setting up the rules for enforcement. Uh, the state hasn't even brought down the criteria yet. They haven't even mentioned the penalties yet. They'll be there, I assure you, but they won't. This is all coming out of the global warming movement, if you will, the, how much CO2 is in the air specifically. That's this whole program, and it's a whole program structured to regulate the entire state in terms of the energy consumptions that we do. They won't even let the state, when I say they, Sacramento and the governor's office, uh, the legislature in the governor's office, they won't even let California buy, uh, fuel and energy if it's produced by coal or, uh, um, oil. Um, and yet, they're imposing on the state 20%, that, first, they imposed 20% under AB 20, uh, 32, and now they've increased it to 33%. Why don't they just say 100%? I, I, I keep telling you, and, and keep this in mind, there's only one renewable energy that pencils out, anywhere, shape, or form, and that's nuclear. Uh, we're not allowed to use nuclear in this state very much anymore. But that's the only renewable source that actually works. Everything else is imposed on you, and the fees are added on you. This city has already imposed severe sanctions on ourselves, meeting those standards, when we start upgrading equipment, that we've done hundreds of thousands, from, from Agenda Item to Agenda Items over the last year or so, you've seen, meeting, uh, increased air quality standards, uh, on equipment that is perfectly good. Uh, and yet, we have to upgrade that, and that's just city of Victorville. All the cities are doing that. It's rolling into the private sector and the businesses. You see out here, that if we set up these rules, they're gonna affect the businesses that want to come out here, the furniture factory notwithstanding. They're gonna add, uh, I don't know, I'm gonna take a guess of 10 to 15% on the utility bill that doesn't exist today if we, uh, start to implement these type of rules. This is so out of control, and there's gotta be a stop to it someplace. I don't know what we're gonna do in, in, as a city. Uh, we do have a, uh, our own, uh, VEMUS, as you say, but, uh, so do a lot of other, uh, municipalities having their own, uh, having to meet these renewable standards, and there's no place to meet them, I don't see. We have renewables to build Power Plant Number Two. We do not have any, uh, renewables, as it were, to meet this standard here. We have zero renewables in that effect. So, um, the hammer is coming down from the state. I don't know when it's gonna stop, because it's gonna stop when you have zero, nothing to show for it. You simply squished yourself out of the business of providing energy, except to double your rates on your homes, double the rates on the city that are in the state, and double the rates on any businesses wanting to do. And this, then you start meeting those. Then you start meeting those air quality standards. That's what AB 32 is all about. It is a slow-moving glacier that is consuming us. We're right now sitting at the edge of it. I make it equate the same as Obamacare-type of thing here. You'll like it when you read all the language in it. Well, we're reading all the language in it, and we're bumping into it. It is a terrible, terrible thing. I'm not inclined to vote for the rules at this time or any type of renewable resource enforcement program, even though the state is mandating, because they haven't even told us what it is they're mandating and what their requirements are. There's none of those facts there. So for my part, at least, having been embedded in this as best I can, as one member of the council, I'm not comfortable adopting these rules right now. Be interesting to see what the county does.
Just a comment on the $78 million deficit in Vemus. Clearly, it was the consequence of the failed construction project at the Foxborough Power Plant, no question about that. But I want to make sure everybody remembers, last December, the city of Victorville won a $52 million lawsuit against the engineering firm, Carter Burgess, which has been acquired by Jacobs Engineering, which is one of the two or three largest engineering firms in the country. We won a 12-0 vote on all five counts, $52 million award. That award is on appeal, and while it's on appeal, it is earning 10% per year in interest. So in the last year, that award has gone from 52 to almost $58 million.
Thousand per day.
And in another year, it'll probably be at 62 or 63 million dollars. And we're making major headway on that deficit. As a matter of fact, and I think staff would have to give us the details on this, it is my understanding that our buying and selling of electricity through Vemus is being done at a margin of profit. We're buying it at a better price than we can buy from Edison, and we're selling it at prices better than Edison's. So the operation of Vemus is working as it should be working. And when we clear up that deficit from the construction problem, it should be back on its feet. Have I misspoken, Mr. Robertson?
No, sir, you haven't. It's difficult to look at the Vemus operations and discern its benefit to the city based on the bond issuance that exists that pulls a lot of money out of that operation. The reality is, if you were to pull the bond issue out altogether and just look at the current annual operation, I believe that we are revenue over expenditures, profit in the private sector, of about a million dollars. That's not a whole lot of money, but that million dollars goes towards helping pay that bond issue that would otherwise still exist and still be a debt of the city and have to be paid by the general fund. As that bond payment grows over the years, to the extent that Vemus doesn't grow as well, the general fund will have to pick up the difference there. There's no question about that. You are spot on with regard to the amount of the award, as well as the interest. And we hope that within the next year or so, we'll have the appeal finalized and actually get payment on that. So I did happen to talk to the jurors myself after that trial, and to say it was 12-0 is a bit of a misnomer, because the two alternates also were right along there with them. They would have voted 14-0 if they were given the opportunity. They actually wanted to award more dollars, but didn't feel that they could, since they awarded us every penny that we asked for.
And Doug, would it not be correct to say that that is also supposed to include attorney's fees at this point?
At this point, we've been awarded $1.9 million in attorney's fees. When the appeal is final, we will go back to the court again to attempt to recover attorney's fees for the appeal. Also, I understand Mr. Rothschild's passion regarding AB 32 and those sorts of issues. I would point out that in the staff report, page 187 of your agenda, it talks about the fact that if we don't adopt a plan by January of next year, then we are subject to fines from the California Energy Commission. Should the council be interested? You know, I am not a utilities expert. I was not a utilities expert when I was temporarily assigned to the utility department. I'm not one now. I sure would know a whole lot more than I did then. But if you have specific questions of a technical nature, we do have our A-team here, that's Lynn Viejo, who is our consultant. I've made no bones that I'm not a fan of having consultants for such highly risky operations. My preference has been, since I did get burned by the engineers on that case, my preference would be to have a city employee with the level of expertise that Mr. Viejo has. But we don't have that at this time. We have some very good employees who are learning daily from Mr. Viejo. I have a lot of respect for the man, and I'm hoping to someday thank him for all of his good work that he did in helping train the employees as he's being our expert and as he is loyal to the city, which we did not have with previous experts. So if you have specific technical questions, Mr. Viejo is here to answer those.
I have a question. I'd like to know if Buck John's is in any way involved in this.
No.
Have we ever been fined before for this?
No, this is actually a new law. It's so new that the rulemaking isn't even complete yet, so we're sort of adopting rules for rules that don't exist. It's changing probably monthly at this point.
Will we be able to meet the 33% by 2020?
I have no reason to believe we won't, but 2020 is an awfully long way away. On, I think it was the second meeting in October, this council expanded the city manager's ability to purchase. Originally, the purchase authority for the city manager, in order to take advantage of good deals that came along, was restricted just to energy. And in October of this year, this council voted to expand that to be able to, if their renewable energy credit came available, that was a good deal, that I could pull the trigger on that within the limits that are set by the council. So we are preparing for this, and this is just one more step in preparing for those renewable energy standards.
What happens if we don't meet the 33% in 2020?
You know, it's tough to say. My history with dealing with these environmental rulemaking authorities is that as it gets a little bit closer to reality, many times, not always, but many times, the standards are unable to be met, and they will tend to relax those standards or stretch out the timeframes that you have. With the current governor, he seems to be ramping it the other way. So it's a little bit yet to be seen. But if we don't meet them, then we would be subject to fine. The reality is that we don't have any Victorville residents that are customers of the Victorville Municipal Utility Services. Victorville Municipal Utility Services serves two business parks. One is SCLA, the other being the Foxborough Business Park. So those customers in those areas would be the ones that would be responsible for any increases in rates in order to cover the increased cost of renewable power.
You know, it appears that Councilman Rothschild is not happy with this. I just have to ask you, Mike, what is the solution? Get rid of Vemus, or?
Well, I think the solution eventually is that we might have to adopt a rule, but they haven't even defined the standards for the rules yet or the penalties associated with those. So how can we adopt a policy in front of it? It's kind of like the Redevelopment Agency. If you give us all your money, we'll let you stay in existence. That's the way the state is operating now. And they have no rules in place at the moment. I'm sure they'll come up with them, but as I've talked to the energy experts, I've been marching this energy business ever since I've been on the first time around on BB1, and going down with the Los Angeles people and everything else. There's no way they're going to meet this 20 to 33% renewables. It can't be done based on what this legislature has put down on their plate already, refusing to take the natural gas, I mean, not natural gas, the coal and the oil energy. So imposing that on to SCLA out there, we may have to do that because we live in California and we have to adhere to the rules. But right now, I don't even see why we're pressing this rule. I'd prefer to sit back and see what the county does on their rulemaking. They're the ones that were sued initially. They were right out of the barrel. They were the first ones sued by Jerry Brown when he was lieutenant governor. So now he's the governor, and I'm sure they're going to look at Sam Baranian and say, hey, what are you doing about our rulemaking process? Why should Victorville be the front end of that? I don't see it. I don't see why we need to do that.
I would like to ask our city attorney, do we have any options here as a council, or are we going to be subject to fines if this doesn't pass?
The problem, as Mike was alluding to, is that the rules and the ramifications of not doing this are completely unknown at this time. They're going through a rulemaking process. This bill that was adopted, I believe, in November essentially basically requires us to adopt an enforcement plan. And we also, at some point, have to adopt a procurement plan. We don't even know what the parameters for that are yet. That's all in Sacramento's rulemaking. What this requires is that if we don't do it, we will be subject potentially to fines, but we don't know what those would be. What we're trying to do is jump ahead of the game a little bit, because this affects publicly-owned utilities, smaller ones. The hope here is that we will be given a lot of discretion if we adopt our own rules and that the CEC and the Public Utilities Commission will somewhat leave the small municipal utilities alone. They have done that in the past. This is the first time they've sort of jumped into our arena and required us to adopt rules. So it's a complete unknown. The statute right now, the Senate Bill 2X, does require us to adopt this. It says there will be penalties if we don't do it. We don't know what those penalties are yet. They're in the process of trying to develop those.
Well, my concern is that we don't have the money for penalties. We don't have the money to go after and sue because they're not giving us all the rules. So I'm a little bit...
We'd be penalized potentially for not adopting an enforcement program. We haven't yet even adopted a procurement program, so there's no way at this point that we would be doing anything in violation, to the extent we were to adopt an enforcement policy at this place. We're basically just abiding by the requirements of the Senate bill and putting the things in place that need to be, that are required by the state of California.
The violation would be if we did not act on...
Correct. If we didn't act on this, again, we don't know what the penalties are at this point. Most small utilities are doing the same thing. They're adopting essentially an enforcement program at this time with the understanding that they may have to change it or modify it in the future, but at least we'd be in compliance with the Senate bill at this point. The procurement plan rules are being worked on by the state legislature and the CEC at this point, and at that time, we'll know further what ramifications would be from noncompliance.
So in essence, we'll have another shot at this.
I would think we'd have plenty of time to make adjustments to this if it didn't work. But here again, I think the smaller utilities in California are trying to get ahead of the game, in good faith, adopting this type of enforcement program to show that we can control our own destiny and hopefully retain some discretion as to how we comply, even with the procurement rules in the future. Our consultants are recommending that we do this. Most of the smaller utilities have been involved with the rulemaking process to date, and we're trying to, again, obtain as much discretion or retain as much discretion within the city to run our own municipal utility without too much oversight. Adopting these rules hopefully will help us do that.
Okay, I believe I closed the public hearing. Is that correct? So I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Agenda item number 18 is a consent calendar.
I'd like to pull item A.
Okay.
Which item?
Item A.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem Rothschild. Excuse me, Councilmember Rothschild.
All right, this time we'll go ahead and handle agenda item 18A, Ms. Vias.
Excuse me, Mayor McEagren, I'm missing votes from you and Councilmember Vias. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
I'd just like to point out that, once again, we're paying the city attorney $172,000.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda item number 19 is requested to adopt Resolution Number 11-055, entitled "The Resolution of the City Council of City of Victorville, revising the table of organization, fixing the rates of utilization, and establishing fringe benefits for employees of the City of Victorville," and superseding Resolution Number 10-069 and subsequent amendments.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy.
I have some questions. What is the balance of the general fund reserves?
At this very moment, I don't have that information. The general fund reserves were estimated to be $2.2 million at the end of last fiscal year, based on budgeted numbers. It actually came in at about $3.3 million. So we would estimate that, based on the current budget, which had about $300,000 in reserves at the end of this fiscal year, that that would actually be about $1.4 million in reserves now at the end of this fiscal year, when taking into account the additional dollars from last year. That has to do partially with a little bit of an uptick in revenues that we've talked about before, including sales tax numbers being higher, but to a much greater extent, some savings that were realized over last fiscal year, to the degree of about a million dollars or so that the staff and employees did not spend that was anticipated in the budget.
Okay, on page one and page two of four, exactly what funds are you referring to when you say "other" for the $191,000?
For the $191,000, that would be any number of funds. It would quite literally be probably hundreds, if not thousands, of accounts. It would be redevelopment funds. It would be airport funds. It would be water district funds. It would be everything in the city that an employee is paid out of that's not part of the general fund.
Are any of those funds restricted funds?
They would be restricted to those uses, and the salaries are part of those uses that it would be restricted to. So there's no issues there.
Okay. And then on page four of four, where it indicates, I see that there were raises given to other positions on four of four. What is the fiscal impact for the increased retirement due to those combined raises in the COLA?
I'm not sure exactly which positions, but our retirement percentages, I know that the employee share is 8%. The employer share, I believe, was 12 or 13%. Diana is nodding in the audience, so it's somewhere right around there.
I have a list of probably 10 positions here that were given raises. And it just indicates that the ranges went up, but I don't have actual salaries. So I know that when you increase the salary with the COLA, then you would pay more in the retirement, and I noticed that that wasn't included in the staff recommendation. So going to my next question is, can the general fund sustain any of the other funds' deficits in particular, like RDA, since it may be going away?
At this time, the general fund theoretically could assist with the RDA, but given the current status of the Supreme Court and the questions that were asked at the hearing that was held, regarding our bonds, the bond counsel has advised us that any loans made to the RDAs at this point, should the Supreme Court vote to uphold the bill that would eliminate RDAs and not uphold the bill that would allow us to opt back in, any money loan to the RDAs at this point would be at risk. So there would not be any loans that we would make at this time.
In relation to the last COLA increase, the Daily Press stated that on May 12, 2008, that the City of Victorville staff would give up the COLA increases in lieu of every Friday off. Yet there is no mention of returning to Fridays. How much is this combined benefit going to cost? Because now we're talking about salary increases, COLA, and the Friday.
Right. The salary increases that are listed in here generally are temporary in nature until we can do a little bit of a reorganization and return to hiring. Regarding the Fridays off, back in... Regarding the Fridays off, back in, I thought it was actually earlier than 2008, there was a plan set up whereby employees would give up their COLAs until the 10% was made up. In 2009, we accelerated that and actually cut pay by 7.7% in order to save dollars. So that program that would have taken place over a number of fiscal years, probably estimated back then at three to four fiscal years, that was effectively made up in, I think it was July or August of 2009, with a pay cut. The theory, back when it was first proposed, was that we would get every Friday off as a furlough, give up the COLA that year, and then give up COLAs each year following, up until the point that it equaled 10%. We made that jump shortly thereafter when we simply couldn't afford to continue that, that line of thinking.
Oh, okay, and then the...
I'm sorry. At this point, the employees haven't had a COLA since 2008.
Okay. It says here that the cost of living adjustment is based on 3.3% March to March on urban consumer CPI. What, what is, what is that, what areas does that include?
San Bernardino, Riverside Counties. We've historically always used the March to March. And in fact, anytime you do a CPI, you want to stick with the same month each time you do it. Otherwise, you have to go all the way back to the month that you started in order to correctly calculate it.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that San Bernardino Counties are, that, that county was, our local area was included in that urban CPI. Was there a salary survey done? I know you just said that. It was just a temporary.
You know, this came up at budget, and I requested, recommended a salary survey. There was a lot of discussion about, you know, could staff perform a salary survey? I was opposed to that, but ultimately, the city manager and the city council, city manager at the time, city council decided to try to do it in-house. We have not done that survey at this time. You know, we've had some additional reductions in human resources. I'm not comfortable, not based on the abilities of staff, but just based on past history with not only this organization but other organizations where I've worked, if you have internal staff doing the salary survey, it opens them up to tremendous criticism from either their fellow employees or the public. So at, hopefully at mid-year or maybe next, next budget year, I will be coming back to this council once again, asking for a salary survey. I'd like to do a full classification compensation study. It's not going to be cheap to do it, but I think with all of the changes that we've had over the last few years with reorganizations and having lost literally one-third of our employees, there are a lot of people that are doing multiple jobs, not just department heads who've left. We've gone from 16, 17 department heads down to two at this point. But also throughout the organization, in fact, a lot of the, the raises that you mentioned there on page four are as a result of others leaving who were in a higher salary. So we're sort of temporarily, as we've had a soft hiring freeze on, temporarily, temporarily asked them to do more, and so we're paying them a little bit more to do it. So I would love to do a salary survey and want to bring that back to the council very soon.
Okay, but, but for these raises that were given and the title changes, was there any type of, like, city-to-city comparison that was done?
Not at this point, no. The comparison that is done typically with these is someone, in most of these instances, someone who was in that position, in a higher salary position, has left the city. And since they've left the city, we've asked someone else to step up, and so we're temporarily awarding them additional salary until we can do a full recruitment and, and hire that way.
Do we have out-of-class pay?
Yes, we do. And provisional pay as well for, just depending on the, on each circumstance.
So are they getting out-of-class pay on top of these raises?
Diana, you want to answer?
Actually, I'm not, I'm not certain what raises you're referring to.
Okay, if you go, if you go to page, page four of four...
Correct. If you're referring to title change slash range changes...
Right.
Those are existing classifications that were part of the budget. And what happened is, some of the positions were simply eliminated, the lower level one, and we reflected the higher level one. So actual incumbents may be receiving working out-of-class pay. They may be receiving provisional pay. Nobody has actually occupied the higher level title. That would be done through a recruitment.
Okay. I'm referring to, if you go to Administrative Services, and then it says on the second one, "From Information Technology Technician 2, Range 28, to Network Coordinator, Range 39."
Correct.
So when I read that, I think that you got, they went up in range from 28 to 39, that title. How, how are you...
Network Coordinator was a budgeted position. We eliminated the Information Technology position. But rather than reflecting added position and deleted position, we're simply saying we swapped out a classification. That person didn't receive the raise, though.
I see.
They're basically underfilling a higher level position that was budgeted.
Okay, I understand now. Okay, and when you go down to where it says demotions, and it says "From Administrative Services Manager, HR, Range 48, to Human Resource Analyst, Range 41," what, are those positions filled and then they got demoted? Or are they empty and they were demoted?
Let me answer that one. I don't want to talk about any specific positions, because I think that would be violating those employees' rights. But in, in general, the positions listed as demotions are filled positions through reorganization. The higher level position, in this case, several management positions, were eliminated, and those employees were given the opportunity, rather than being laid off, to actually move down to a lower pay, lower title position.
They just bumped?
Correct. They bumped.
Okay, I understand that. Okay, so there's, there's, it was my misunderstanding. There were no salary increases. So we're just looking at the retirement. Do you have that figure with you, Diana, of, of what the extra retirement would be if they received these COLA increases? Is that number of retirement reflected in the $352,000?
No. That retirement figure would have been part of the budget. The budget that was originally passed back in June or July would have put the higher level position with a salary and with it all the ancillary benefits. Retirement would have been one of them, all your different, let's see, long-term disability...
Was this COLA increase budgeted?
No, it was not. No, the request tonight is to appropriate the money to budget this position. The dollars that you see there, actually, especially the, the general fund dollars, I can speak directly to, not only do we have enough money remaining from last fiscal year that we weren't anticipating, but also there's already been enough attrition in the city in order to cover those costs with just the two management positions in community services that recently left. That would be most likely enough to cover those costs. So because the, the salaries, employee salaries for the 300 and some employees are spread over literally thousands of accounts or buckets, as Mr. Mueller likes to call them, it would be, you know, hundreds of pages probably to try to list each individual dollar amount. These two numbers that I requested from finance staff are based on the actual personnel schedules that were completed as part of the budget process with an increase of 10% to, to, to each grouping. Or, sorry, 3%, not 10%, 3% to each grouping, so.
Okay, I'm going to ask the question one more time, and I just need a yes or a no, because I'm not getting it. Are these, are some of, these, these positions that are working out-of-class, they're receiving out-of-class pay? Is that correct?
That's correct. Or provisional pay. There's a difference.
Okay.
Yes.
And you were saying that you gave them an increase. Are you referring to the increase as the provisional or out-of-class pay? Or are you saying that was on top of that?
No, that's as part of the working out-of-class pay. Typically, working out-of-class pay or provisional assignments carry either 5 or maybe 10% depending on the level of duties. Or in some instances, someone may be provisionally assigned to a higher level, and then they're awarded or they're given the pay at the bottom step of that, of that, that, that new position that they're doing temporarily.
And I do understand that we have different buckets or funds, but how do we, how do we justify the city giving raises when we've laid off for the last three years? We defaulted on our debt service and about $7 million. How do we justify that?
It's tough. It's, it's a very delicate balancing act. You know, we've lost a lot of good employees. We've lost several employees again this year. And my concern is that as the economy begins to come back, as other cities begin to hire, if our employees have essentially no hope that we're going to be raising salaries anytime soon, then I think that we lose some of our very talented staff. So that is my concern. I recognize that there is a risk at some point that if we don't get the general fund balanced next year, there could be additional cuts. But at this point in time, considering that two-thirds of our former employees or two-thirds of the employees we used to have are doing the work of, of what, you know, used to be all of them with very minor service level drops, I think our employees are doing more for less. Let me go through just a couple of the cuts that we've experienced that our employees have endured, very quietly, actually, over the last three years. They've had no COLA for the last three years. They've had no merit increases for the last three years. The fringe has been at $626, the amount that all of us, all of our employees are, are given the same amount of subsidy to pay for health benefits, has been at $626 since 2003. Since that time, Health Net Family Plan, which is generally our cheapest plan, has gone from $589 to $1,194, an increase of $605 that the employees have had to pay out of their pockets. So that's effectively been a reduction in their overall pay. They've had a 10% furlough salary reduction that we talked about earlier, reduced vacation accruals, reduced sick leave accruals based on those furlough amounts, eliminated two holidays from the calendar, eliminated stability pay, reduced fringe benefits, cash back option, suspended tuition reimbursement, suspended sick leave buyback, and eliminated the 401 Plan for Management. All of these things have generally been accepted by the employees. They still work hard. They work harder for less at this time, and I don't see that a 3% increase as effective January 1 is something that is going to overly burden the city in any way. Regarding the bond payment, that's something that is related only to the Airport Authority. It's not related to the city. It doesn't come from these city funds. And in fact, although the city technically could have paid it, as I mentioned earlier, that money would have been at risk, and that's why we chose not to. If the Supreme Court makes a decision by January 15, as they have said they will, and we are allowed to, if the RDAs still exist, we would intend to make the payment as soon as that happens. But until that happens, that, that'll just have to wait.
And our surrounding cities, have they been receiving COLA increases?
Actually, the City of Adelanto received a 3% increase effective July 1 of this past year. The City of Hesperia didn't respond to our inquiries. And the Town of Apple Valley...
3.7 is what you'd sent me earlier, Diana. I know you're shuffling through your notes.
Yeah, I'm checking through my notes. I don't believe the effective date, though, was this past year.
Yeah.
They were, they were still researching their resolution, if you recall.
You know, I spoke with...
I don't have that.
I...
But I do have that they had other, other changes in their benefits schedule.
Uh-huh.
And they do an annual salary survey, as you're, I believe, familiar with. I don't recall the results of that. They didn't provide it to me.
Yeah, I spoke to Hesperia today, and they said that, that they did not receive a COLA, and they haven't for the last three years. And they've had their step increases frozen, just as Victorville. And Apple Valley didn't. Adelanto, their, their salaries are so low, they would probably qualify for public assistance, so...
And we also surveyed their fringe benefits, which all of them are higher. And in fact, in the Town of Apple Valley, they subsidize. They not only have a higher fringe amount, but they subsidize the amount up to $314. So they're paying over $1,000 in their insurance costs. The City of Hesperia and the City of Adelanto also have an increased amount. City Manager Robertson mentioned we have vacancies. As of January, we'll have 17 vacancies. These are 17 positions that were budgeted July 1 that are not filled due to attrition. And additionally, you asked a question regarding were the, were the benefits budgeted in any cost of living adjustment? The answer is yes. The figures I provided included all fringe benefits that are associated to a percent of the salary. So when I said $166,000 to the general fund, it not only included the salary increase of that six-month cost of living adjustment, but it also included the ancillary benefits.
And just to be clear, I didn't read my list in order to try to have people cry for public employees. You know, our employees have, have done a lot. They have endured a lot. And I know the private sector has also had tremendous cuts as well. This 3% recommended increase that I, that I'm recommending is effectively attempting to keep them up with inflation so that they don't continue to lose dollars. And that's all it was meant to do.
I think it's important to keep, keep one particular fact in mind. On January 1 of 2009, when Jim Cox came back as city manager, and I, he and I had some conversations at that time, the city was facing a $14 million deficit. And that would be the year ending June 30, 2010. We didn't have a $14 million deficit. It was probably three last year. This year, we anticipated a three. It's probably going to be more like one next year. We think it's going to be balanced. Those are important management decisions that were made, very, very difficult management decisions. But you've got to understand, the people that made that work were the employees. It wasn't the people sitting in the city manager's office. It was all the folks in the field, in the trenches, doing this work and helping us get through this terrific financial crisis that we've been in. And my gosh, giving them a small reward for that does not seem unreasonable to me.
If, I might add one other item. We did receive information from CalPERS, our retirement system's going to, they're going to charge us less for the current benefits we have effective July 1 of next year. So that obviously will be folded into the budget that's submitted to the council. And I think everybody could appreciate the fact that when you have this massive attrition that we've been having through either forced layoffs, voluntary layoffs, and through just attrition through retirements or employees receiving other positions in other agencies, you tend to have a brain drain. We can't control what employees are going to leave. But we also have to look at the future and what employees we're going to be able to attract when we start recruiting. Our reputation is going to go beyond Southern California, and I think, you know, all of the city leaders need to keep that into mind. I could tell you the names, and I've been in the field quite a few years. Don't want to age myself, but it's quite a few years. I could tell you the cities in the past 20 years that did massive layoffs, and their reputation is still there. So what that means is, people who think they're going to come and apply for a position with the City of Victorville in the future, they're not going to. And it doesn't matter what type of benefits you start throwing back at the employees if that occurs. We have to think of our future. And that's something I would think that the city leaders want to always keep in the back of their mind. That brain drain, you can't undo it. And I think, Councilman Vias, you of all people know how hard it is to get qualified, quality employees. And then when you start seeing them leave, it just, you know, it really tugs at your heart to know all the effort you went to get them in and not a thing you could do when you're leaving, when you're losing them.
You know, although I do recognize that, that line staff have endured many sacrifices with more work over the last couple of years, they need to be recognized in some way for their hard work and their dedication. However, after three years of layoffs and defaulting on our debt service obligations and meeting police in parks and roads, I just, I just can't justify raises at this time.
Well, I, I for one support the request from our city manager. Our city employees, the ones that are left, that we, we really went down on our employee list, we, I think, over 200 employees since this thing started. Employees that were left have suffered enough, probably more than any other employees. You know, some agencies still have a tuition reimbursement, and, you know, that's great. We don't. As our city manager mentioned, all the, the fringe benefits that were reduced. And so I think a 3% is in line, and I'm going to support that.
Yeah, I'm, I concur with Mr. Kennedy's summary, too. It's a very... Yeah, I'm, I concur with Mr. Kennedy's summary too, it's a very good snapshot there of what we've gone through, and if the state and the federal government had ever done those things, probably we wouldn't be in the dire states we are today, but the fact is, is you don't re, you don't run government on zero employees, it doesn't happen. And we've cut ours by a third, we've sacrificed programs and cut back, and I didn't remember the fourteen million, but I know it was a number over ten million, that we brought it down to one this year, and actually, kind of almost even this year, so we've sacrificed a lot, the employees have done more with less, and we're at a point now where we can give a little bit of a, of a back, so I feel very comfortable with the, the request the city manager is asking for.
And, and I would concur, I think from my perspective, obviously, this is a management decision, obviously, you have to come to the council to ratify it, but this is completely with, within our city manager's purview, should be his decision-making. But to give you an example of what I've had to even deal with in my own organization, private sector, I'm at a point where I've laid off as many people as I possibly can. You know, we have a, a great core staff, and I'm having to do some things to keep those people there, you know, give them some flexibility as to when they come to work, where they work from, in some cases, they work from home, because they're good, they're, they produce for our organization, and so we recognize that, and we're doing those things to keep them employed. So this is nothing more than that, I applaud Doug Robertson, our city manager, for doing what he's, what he's doing to keep our quality staff intact, and hopefully, for the future, be able to attract future quality staff, so.
Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Item number twenty is request to ratify the expenditure plan for the Homeland Security Grant Program allocation for 2010, 2011, and authorize city manager or his designee to process all documents required for the program administration.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Councilmember Vias, thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number twenty-one is request to ratify expenditure plan for the 2011, 2012 Supplemental Law Enforcement Services Fund allocation, Code 2702107, and authorize city manager or his designee to process all documents required for the program administration.
Where is this saying? I have a question. Captain Yoder, where is this money coming from?
[clears throat]
Okay, so taxpayers? I wanted to know, this overtime, how does this, this overtime compare to last year's overtime?
I don't have the numbers for the overtime for the last year or this year as a total. The supplemental grants are, as you know, in the past, it was monies that were provided to the cities to add police officers. Now, since, but the requirement of the grant used to be that you would take the grant for a two-year period, pay for police officers for the positions, and then the city would have to adopt those police officers after that. Now, since the money's been cut, most of the monies are going straight to, to cover overtime expenditures for officers that we can't, have not hired at this point to pay for overtime to supplement those overtime costs. We use it towards investigations and supplementing some of our other, our overtime costs and community programs we're starting.
Do you find that, just off the top of your head, you don't have to give me exact numbers, that overtime has increased?
You know what, since I've been there the last six months, we leveled it off, our department has been very good at providing a specific number for overtime that we do not try to exceed, so we maintain our overtime at those levels, and that's required by our, our sheriff's department, not what has been provided by the city.
And using the grant money this way is cheaper than buying an officer?
It actually saves the city money, and it, it does, because the city does not have to pay for the overtime, it's federal grants that we use that money if we need overtime. And really, if we want to do special enforcement-type overtimes, we do that, utilize that money instead of going after the city, or using overtime monies from the city that was built into our, our annual budget.
So this, this overtime is, is being used because you need more officers, do you find that you may have a shortage?
Well, it's open to every law enforcement agency, it's a built-in grant that each, each city has offered money for that we apply for.
Okay, because I'm still getting a lot of complaints from people in the community that, you know, it takes the officers an hour, two hours to respond.
I have not received any complaints.
Okay, maybe if you stay after, we can talk about it, I have some names.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, sorry, I think the response, she was referring to response time, I was looking at your report, and it goes back to two thousand nine, two thousand ten, and then currently up to date to two thousand eleven. Your response times for your response, A, I guess you'd call it, is, is just a little bit over four, about four and a half, something like that, which is pretty good response time, the average. And then your other part, your priority one, two, and three, I guess you'd go, they're about seven, and then fourteen, and fourteen. So I, they're pretty consistent throughout those, those years, but the one, the most important one would be your E, what, that's your...
That's all, our priority one calls are emergency calls, and I would compare our response times to any other agency in Southern California.
Yeah, and, and I want to commend you for that, because I was looking at that, and the other, the other portion of that report that, that I was looking at was where your Part One crime and your Part Two crime has actually declined since 2009.
Yeah, they've had a seven percent decrease in crime between 2009, 2010, I think we're gonna be on an average to where they were last year, if not below, in some of the Part Two crimes, but I have not received the final crime stats for this year yet.
I just wanted to point out that your response time is, is, it's incredible, really, for our size of the city, and I commend you for that.
Thank you.
Well, when you have less officers on the street, of course, you're gonna have less crime, because there's not anyone taking the reports, so, and I heard that directly from the sheriff's department. That's all.
Thank you.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, on item number twenty-two, I need to recuse myself, I live in the Eagle Ranch area and pay into this LMAD as part of my property taxes.
I would also recommend Councilwoman Vias refuse herself.
Item number twenty-two is request to approve an additional appropriation in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty thousand from unappropriated fund balance available for LMAD number two, Eagle Ranch, to fund expenditures related to the repair of landscape erosion structures and other minor repair projects.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias absent.
Item number twenty-three is request to approve the revised development impact fee road projects list attached to the agenda item.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number twenty-four is request to award annual supply agreement to American Traffic Products, Inc. for traffic paint for the duration of fiscal year 2012.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number twenty-five is council committee reports, this is for any committees, boards, commissions that we all might sit on, I'll start with Councilmember Rothschild, anything? Councilmember Vias?
Victor Valley Transit Authority moved to its new facility at 17150 Smoke Tree Street in Hesperia over the weekend, and with Sandbag's assistance, VVTA just secured one-point-three million dollars for C, CMAQ for replacement vehicles. VVTA will operate at reduced hours on Saturday, December twenty-sixth, and January second.
Tomorrow morning, Sandbag will be hearing the report from staff and, and recommendation to award the La Masona-Squali Interchange Project to Riverside's construction, some thirty-one million-plus dollars, but an estimated over eighteen million dollars in savings to the taxpayers, so I'm very looking forward to voting yes on that tomorrow. So, it's been a long time coming, and it's gonna be nice to see that project move forward, please look for the groundbreaking coming in early January. All right, moving on to council reports, discussion and possible action regarding items for upcoming city council agenda, Councilwoman Vias?
I just wanted to bring up about the senior citizens, that, you know, we're, we're gonna get a report back on that.
Yeah, definitely, I was under the impression that another agency was actually gonna make contact with them, and had indicated they wanted to provide some financial assistance to them, something that I knew the city can't do at this time, since apparently that hasn't happened, I'll definitely be in contact with them. I'm a little bit embarrassed that I relied on, on others, sometimes that comes back to bite you.
And, and also Garner Morris stated that maybe the county would have some leftover money somewhere, is that the same one?
That's the same one, I was, didn't wanna call anybody out, but yes, it was Mr. Morris that said that the county supervisor may have some dollars that he can send their way. I know that his budget was recently cut, so maybe that had an effect, I don't, don't honestly know, but I intend on getting in contact with Mr. Morris to find out if that's something that's still viable, maybe he, Mr. Rothschild and I can all go over together to have a look.
Okay, and then I was glad to hear that, that the city manager's looking at the Spice of Life and, and possibly getting other chambers of commerce involved in this, and I would, I would like to see that, you know, obviously, the previous people that were doing the Spice of Life were not able to pull in any revenue, and I think that there is definitely money there that could be used for Parks and Recreation. It, it was, you know, it, it clearly looked like a slush fund, and their money was just, just spent, I think, inappropriately, so I, I would like to see something done with that, and I think that it could be a real help to the city and to the Parks and Recs.
Anything to add to future agenda? Okay. Mike, anything under, well, actually, I'll go to Doug first under staff report.
Thank you, the only thing I have to report is, as you recall at the last meeting, the Victorville Storm were here, I'm pleased to announce that they were able to raise enough money to get to Florida, they were there, they are still there, actually, they played Sunday afternoon, I was able to catch, after church, I was able to catch the second half of the game, it wasn't pretty, they lost, they lost thirty-five, nothing, but the nice thing was seeing those boys work really hard in the fourth quarter, as, you know, time is winding down, they were still hustling, they were still trying to make plays, trying, trying their best, so that was kind of refreshing to see. They do have a consolation game tomorrow afternoon, it's not on ESPN3 like the other game was, so we'll have to wait and see the internet update, hopefully, they'll, they'll get a win, and hopefully, they've enjoyed their experience, you know, I've offered to throw a pizza party for them, and hope to do that when they get back, and hope to remind them to remember the fact that they actually won the West, and not remember so much the, the difficult Sunday that they had in Florida, but I'm proud of those boys, they're doing great.
On a similar note, I just have to report this, because you won't read about it in the Daily Press, it's sad, but Cal State San Bernardino is thirty-one miles away from downtown Victorville, and that's exactly the same distance as Barstow, and we read about every athletic event that occurs in Barstow, we don't read anything about Cal State San Bernardino. But I have some news for you, the women's volleyball program at Cal State San Bernardino was ranked almost all year, was ranked number one in Division Two in the NC2A. They won the California Collegiate Athletic Association Conference Championship for the ninth time in the last eleven years, they won the Western Region, NC2A Western Region Championship for the fifth time in the last six years. We have the National Division Two Player of the Year on this team at Cal State San Bernardino. They finished, they finished all the way to the national championship game, which was hosted this year at Cal State San Bernardino. The national championships were hosted thirty miles away for Division Two Women's Volleyball. Okay, they went into the final game with a record of thirty-two, and only lost, it was just painful, but what a wonderful program. Five years ago, six years ago, in 2005, the National Division Two Volleyball Player of the Year, young lady named Brianna Harris, from Hesperia Christian, in her senior year in high school, and she was the High Desert Female Athlete of the Year. And sadly, the Daily Press didn't even report that, and it's unfortunate, I don't know what we need to do to get the Daily Press to report Cal State's activities, but just so you know, we have a wonderful women's volleyball program, many, many young women from the High Desert have played on that team over the years. Gosh, if there's any way to get the Daily Press to report it, it would be a credit to the city.
As a proud alumnus, go Yotes! Go Yotes!
All right, well, I just think it's important to recognize that our district attorney's doing a wonderful job, and, you know, I, it's funny that you commend the district attorney for making, rendering one decision, but, you know, insult him on his other decision regarding you. So with that, we are adjourned.